Before we get started, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Steve Durford. I'm the sheriff here at the county. Also with us at any kind of community meetings that I attend, we have the high patrol attendants. They're there to track any questions and issues that become a point of discussion. We have also a deputy back from the U.S. State Department office here as well. Also in the back, our community service officer, Rosa DeLay. She also is in charge of private convention and neighborhood watch groups and things like that, a volunteer organization. Also Chief Richard Webb, thank you for allowing us to use your bay and all of the Linda Fire Department staff. Sergeant Tom Oakes was here, he's heading off to the call, but he will probably be his way back here until we wind this up. Folks, what I'd like to do is just kind of open up a few discussion points on my part, just to maybe a little bit about the Sheriff's Department. It certainly knows things that are weighing on your mind in regards to some emails that I've received from you, which I'm very appreciative of, and thank you for that. Certainly prompting this neighborhood watch group with you on this town hall meeting as well. I have to tell you that now that we're connected with your Facebook neighborhood watch spot, and some of you can find it live on Rosa, so join your club because she doesn't live in Plumas Lake. I'm very appreciative of that. I would say that honestly, and perhaps a little bit of fault on our side as far as not being able to affect the means of advertising. Back in 2007, when I became sheriff of the county, I had committed to every year doing town hall meetings throughout the county, through the foothills and the valley. For five of the last six years, I had done town hall meetings in Plumas Lake. And normally connected with the previous Plumas Lake website, which basically kind of the phone out, certainly being connected with you now through the meeting as by attendance. The best attended town hall meeting I've ever had anywhere in this county, so thank you for coming today. Because the town hall meeting that I had planned was in May, April or May of this year at Rio Middle World School, is the only time in the history of me doing town hall meetings that I've ever done. So, I appreciate you guys. Anyway, just a couple of things in regards to, and there's just so much stuff about the sheriff's office, we can talk about it, and will we please ask any questions in just a minute that's on your mind about whatever. But I did want to just mention certainly the fiscal times that we are in, certainly all of you are confronted with, whether it's in your business or in your personal finances. I just wanted to kind of pitch to you out there what that has been for us in the sheriff's office, your sheriff's office, as what those impacts have been. There are no doubt, we have not been spared from the downturn of the economy. It's not just a Huba County problem, as you know, it's not just a state of California problem, but it's really a national, world economic problem that we're all confronted with. We have raised for five years in a row, hits to our budget. I would tell you that heading into this fiscal year of 2013-14, the impact to us was over a million dollar hit that we had. A bit of improvement considering that fiscal hit that we had in the year 2010-11 was 3.4 million, so in that sense it's better. But I won't deny the fact that five years in the track of the nature of us, you know, kind of making ends meet, it's been tough. I would say that we are currently sitting on 22 vacancies organization-wide at the Sheriff's Department, and it's not just patrol deputies, there are a few of those, but everywhere within our organization. The thing I want to emphasize though, this is since the downturn of this economy and the fact that we have 22 vacancies department-wide, I would tell you this, that to date, I can stand before you, and I am kind of proud of this, in the sense that we have not laid off a single Sheriff's Department employee since the downturn of the economy. Many of those vacancies came through attrition, we had a number of retirements that just happened to timely come through, and then we just did not fill their positions. Many of those were in supervisory and management positions at the organization as well. Admin of other funds, other funds that came our way that didn't impact the general fund, we moved staff over to a different piece of job than what they had. It kept them employed, it served a function and service to the people if needed to do, that it was a savings to the general fund itself. The thing that we have not done at the Sheriff's Department, and I will fight to the bitter end, I'm hoping that the economy will start to have a tick in the standpoint that we may have to go there. While many agencies across this state, across this nation, in the downturn of their economy and laying off staff, have degraded their level of service to you, to their people in their jurisdictions, we have not run there. Many agencies have gone to the direction of, they've identified certain crimes, if they're both suspect on scene, it's a basically a cold report if you will, we're not coming. If you want a report, you fill it out, mail it in to us, do it electronically. No one's coming to your house to try to let friends or to talk to a neighbor, or see if there's other some trend or pattern happening. We have not done that. And you call us, we will come. And if you get anything out of this town hall meeting, folks, please get this, call us. We have many, many partnerships that are very effective with the fire department, with the high patrol, with all the public safety criminal justice entities across this county and in the U.S. Southern area. We pool resources, because we all know that no one of us has all the manpower or the tricks, the trade to combat the problems in the U.S. Southern area. But the most important partnership we have to have is with you. And certainly through your Facebook neighborhood watch site, is in excellent form for us to have that communication and to talk to each other. It's one thing, and very important, I commend you for sharing that information with each other on your site, but include us in that as well. Because the one thing I want to tell you is that how we police this county is based on a crime analysis approach to what is going on. This entire, the entire county of Huba has broken into areas what we call map reference areas. And we have a crime analyst that regularly, daily, is looking at what's happening everywhere in this county, and making correlations as to whether there's trends, patterns, hotspots that can then help us correct our resources. And I'll talk in a minute, that has happened out here in Plumas Lake as it related to some of the residential burglaries that have occurred. But what's important is, and who else better than each of you that knows what belongs or what doesn't belong in your community? Despite the deputy's best effort, or the high patrol's best effort to know every street, every house, every car, every resident in this entire county, as to who lives there, whose car is what, we're never going to know. You guys do. You know that if they're normally at work that hour, I've never seen that car there before. Please call us. If some good racist did something in your internal instincts and that just doesn't look right, odds are it probably isn't. Call us, let us check it out. If it turns out that you guys are playing a hole, no harm, no foul is the way we look at it. If you may give us a bit of information of, hey, there's a white pickup over here that I've never seen before, and they're on vacation, or they're normally at work that hour, let us know that. Obviously as much description as you can give, don't put yourself unnecessarily in harm's way to get that information, but describing individuals, describing the vehicle itself, its color, obviously a plate is fantastic, it's golden, but communicate with us, because you never know what little bit of information you have connects with other information that we have. What happens every single day in Huba County is, is that everything we do is captured computer-wise. We have computer-driven dispatch, field-based reporting of the cars, all of our hooking information is all computerized. Tattoos, names, associates, AKAs, everything, district attorney records, probation records, court records, all of it is in a computer database to be mined. And we do that. And we're constantly looking at the fact that, you know, Deputy Oaks, or Sergeant Oaks made a stop at 1:00 a.m. somewhere, you know, on Zane's Drive, for example, we didn't have a crime, we couldn't do anything with it, we hadn't cut the person loose, but clearly they weren't anomaly in this area, especially since they're from somewhere else. But we, what we call FI that individual, we field interrogated or field investigated that person, we documented that. Name, height, weight, vehicle, license plate number, all of that information, it goes into the database. When long and cold it's at 1:00 a.m., the guy over there from, you know, Riverside Drive in West Linda is out here at 2:00 in the morning in a white pickup to match some other thing he had, it then creates an investigative lead. And that's the kind of things that we're doing every day. Every single morning, I read every report taken in this county. And where it happened. Every month, we have what we call a comstat meeting, where myself, another sheriff, chief of detectives, the gang guys, the rags guys, every patrol sergeant, we all come into one room and look at crime activity that's happening in that county, and looking at strategies that we may employ in which to address those issues that are going on. We follow up relentlessly on that, constantly information being pushed out by the crime analyst, and then when we, have you yielded some positive effect in that area? If not, why not? Didn't we employ the strategies that we had booked? If not, why not? There's been some people that have been a little bit on the uncomfortable side, you know, with me, and not necessarily fulfilling to the T what it is we expected them to do by the time the next time we met, to try to quell that problem out of there. Primarizing, now when we talk about Plumas Lake here in just a second, folks, I just want to mention to you, there are certain identified crimes that we are required to report to the state and federal government every year. Every law enforcement agency in the nation is required to do that, it's called UCR, Uniform Crime Reports. Like you or not, they are identified as the serious violent crimes, it's not every crime that can occur, but is the most serious of violent crimes, and it is the measuring stick in the barometer check for whether crime is up or down in a particular area. I will tell you that in 2012, our serious violent crimes in Huba County across the expanse of border to border, we were down compared to 2011. Not by a huge amount, but anything downward trend, I hope you agree with me, is positive, is good thing. We had about 50 less serious violent crimes in Huba County in '12 compared to '11. If you go back to the crime rates we were looking at in Huba County about 10 years ago, is a major significant decline, and a couple hundred, about a couple hundred, a couple hundred less serious violent crimes than where we were about 10, 15 years ago in this county as well. So that's very positive. I will tell you that in the Plumas Lake area, what I can share with you now, is what I read is, is the last seven and a half months, basically from January, or from 2013 compared to where we were this time in 2012, compared to where we were in 2011. And I can tell you that since 2011, we've taken less, less overall reports and crime reports in '12, and less in 2013. So far, we're tracking even less there. I get the fact, folks, and we take it as personally as you do, that any one person that's a victim of a crime, a break into your home or break into your car, we take it very seriously. And that's one too many. But we are continuing to focus on this. I will tell you that in, when you, when you kind of take out the fact that, that some reports we take, we take are not really crimes, in the sense that I look at them as it was a mental observation, somebody that was 51, 50 if you will, that's not necessarily a crime that goes in any kind of stack. Or you call because you found a wall in the street, it's a family property report and those kinds of things. I can tell you that we've taken about 35 less crime reports this year so far as where we were before. Now, where it comes in, as far as, and I think the focus for many of you that have communicated with me, is related to some of the theft-related calls. We can talk about anything you guys want here. But we have had, in the last seven and a half months, 15 residential burglaries in the entire spans of Plumas Lake area. We do know that a couple of those, there were in the back, someone was home at the time, and they did occur during the daytime. Those two residents that were home that were allergic to the noise, they scared individuals off. I will tell you that it was on our radar all the way, in the sense that there's about five or six of those burglaries that seem to have a lot of commonalities to it through that crime analysis approach. And routinely what we do is, we look to agencies bordering us, to the north, to the south, to see if there's any kind of connection and similes that they're having, that perhaps they have added information. I will tell you, without going any more specific, we have a few possible leads, I don't know how promising they're going to turn out, but we will continue to follow up on those. And I would say that number 15, again, and your vision of what Plumas Lake might be, might be within the two coagulatives of your home, but it's literally everything from, you know, basically, you know, Bear River Bridge, all the way, you know, going to the other side of, down for our mapping purposes, Plumas are a local road down any section to that. I've looked at every one of those 15 burglaries and the nature of them. I would tell you that some of those 15 were foreclosed homes, that someone did enter to take ceiling fans, or take some metal wiring that was in the wall, and did some damage to replace, but it did constitute a crime of moving a boat or a mercury. There were a few that were able to construction sites where they entered and were to take tools, so they weren't necessarily occupied well. The reality is that 15 numbers, probably closer to in reality about nine, when you just kind of look at those other burglary crimes where people were living in this home, and someone came in and took away their items. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that part of the news as well. I would tell you that the highest increase, just interestingly, in 2013 compared to last year, of the kinds of reports we've taken in Plumas Lake, dramatic spike in frauds. And in looking at what those were, were a lot of online issues, comparable about the information you put online, online purposes, Craigslist, pay, and basically identity theft related crimes, those jumped up rather remarkably. And of course, there was a couple of residences that prompted us to go to them several times relating to some mental observation calls, and those have kind of been addressed, and we expect those to be well. With that, I think what I'd like to do is turn it over to you. Questions, anything at all that you have? I have a few closing comments that I will have to do as well to help you get the resources that you need and to help communicate with us. But if you can now, or raise a hand, questions that you have, and again, there's, it could be a wide vast coverage, and we can have a conversation later in the Sheriff's Office, so what's on your list, called the leather. Is the burglaries. In '12, there were 14 burglaries, and in '11, there were 13. So we did tick up one and two in those last two years of residential burglary. No, that's for seven and a half months. So, I mean, it's possible depending on the latter half of this year, we certainly will look at that again. And then, folks, my business card is in the back, but also through the Sheriff's Office website. You can email right on the front of the front page, homepage of our Sheriff's Office website, it's leaveaprimatip. There's also a link there to communicate to me. If you have a question, don't wait for, you don't have to have a meeting like this to talk to me. Please email me, I promise you, I will answer you. If you have a question or concern about any particular area, you can tell me what's been happening the last year, the last couple of years, I'll certainly have my crime analyst hold members up and share them with you. Again, the main thing is keep having that level of communication with each other about what's going on. The last thing I want is any of you, is to be, you know, kind of walking around Huba County or your home, lettering yourself about what's going on in your sheriff's office. We work for you. Don't ever think that your questions or concerns is ever a bother. And I hear that often from folks, yeah, I should have called, but I thought it was you and I did wrong. You guys have a vision to do. If it's important, you, you need to make it important for us, put it on our radar for us to communicate with you. Because I promise you, you'll get a response from us. If you have questions about how something was handled, you didn't, you know, questioning why a deputy handled something a particular way, or you're unhappy with the service you have, I definitely want to know that as well. I do not stand in front of all of them right now and tell you that I know every minute of every day, what every employee I'm responsible for, you know, says and does. I mean, I do employ human beings, sometimes we make mistakes, sometimes we may not follow through on stuff to the best that we could have, let me know. So that I can follow up with them, and I promise you, I will back to you as to, you know, what we can do to make that better, or what we've done to make that better. Questions? Yes, ma'am?
How many were youth-related? Four out of mine, three of their cars and stuff. Can you, how many of the 30, how many guys, do you provide, can you put them to your tire or, you know?
That's difficult to answer. You heard the question is, can we quantify in the number of thefts, I'll, I'll take it that way, that how many of them are youth-related, as possible suspects? That, that's difficult to know. Sometimes you can probably get assumptions, hey, based on the kinds of items that were taken out of the place, but I don't know that with each of these, I can necessarily describe it. You certainly could have somebody that's under the 818 that did take a construction tools, I mean, so it's hard to tell.
Do you find that crime rates up in the summer and they're not in the fall?
Generally speaking, in the summer anyway, I think the high patrol will agree with me as well, when the days are longer and the days are warmer, activity everywhere tends to go off the rise. Honestly, a lot of things that influence crime rates, many times are things that are really kind of beyond anybody that has a badness control. If by honestly you want crime to go down, have a long, cold, wet winter. I mean, you know, really, it goes out of effect on your crime. I mean, you know, if it's too long, then the best advice is to start pouring up, but... It's kind of a joke, but it's true. I think the longer they're walking in the house together, people tend to realize that getting along each other's nerves and needs and pressure, so, you know, it, yes, summertime, always there's a spike up in activity. People are out longer, usually, you know, alcohol, recreating, things are all happening, school's out, those are factors that tend to be particularly due to an increase in calls for service from us, and an increase in, 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 yes?
It seems from the last week, I heard that the scrubber had his fire officer out there.
I'm, I'm sorry.
The deputy seemed to be controlling more in the last week, is that what you expect from your question?
Good, good question, I actually proactively broke that up. What is the presence of the Huba County Sheriff's Department in Plumas Lake? And I know at times there's this feeling that, is anyone out here? And the honest answer is, yes. Someone is always out here. There are times, but I will tell you, is every minute of every day we have a deputy in Plumas Lake and they get done on you? And the answer to that question is, no, not every minute of every day. Because I will tell you, there are times that all heck is breaking through those guardrails, and we have to pull those units to go that way. Once that is quelled, and we've got to handle all those problems, that maybe it's in the heart of Walla first, or Lendo, or maybe it's even head out towards District 10, or maybe it's even the lower food businesses that we happen to head to, we send them back here. But I will tell you, overwhelming majority of the time, there is a deputy or two, augmented many times by reserve deputies, to be out of this area. Now lately, we haven't seen an increase. Primarily, I think the increase has been corrected by those strategies we talked about in the sense that, we were certainly saying that in four, five, or six crime burglaries daytime, that clearly, we need to heighten our presence and our awareness in the South County, because we've got a trend, a hotspot that is beginning to develop itself. That has dictated added deputies coming this way. Eventually, I will tell you that I will see as many, all at once that you've been out here, but we certainly, you know, have, you know, committing that if we can. The honest answer, folks, do we have enough deputies in the Huba County Sheriff's Department to cover everywhere we can? The answer is no. The answer is no. But I will tell you that if, if, if it worked in progress, it is why we went to this kind of crime analysis approach, in the sense of trying to more intelligently and more strategically allocate our resources to those areas where we're starting to see emerging patterns and problems happening. You know, and so, and that's kind of how that's going. We certainly hope that when things start turning around, we can start filling a lot of those vacancies. The last thing I'm going to do, folks, to any one of you, to stand in front of you and make any kind of excuses, you call, we should be out here. We're doing our very best, I promise you, and then one of the Sheriff's Department are working very hard to cover every expanse of this county, and to address all of your problems that you have. And we will continue to work towards that. You know, some of these strategies, again, we don't advertise these, and yes, it has happened many times in Plumas Lake over the last seven years, but I talked about, we're seeing problems happening, maybe it's a series of vehicle break-ins, and a certain time trend, which it seems to be kind of, of a peak that's happening. We have breakers in various areas of this county, including Plumas Lake, deployed deputies and out here in unmarked vehicles, in plain clothes. We have actually deployed deputies on bikes in three hours of the morning, and maybe three or four coagulatives. We've actually had deputies in the nighttime actually out walking, and actually foot patrol out there. There have been other areas of the county where a little more rule and remote, we have actually installed, you know, cameras in the area to try and capture some type of information that may be there. We've actually used, we have a U.S. Southern Arrow Squadron, we've used them on a couple of occasions to actually fly over the county, and try and nail and see what we can find happening. Again, we don't advertise a lot of those things in what we're doing them, but there are a number of things that are going on that are, that are, our desire to address that problem, in order to identify who's responsible and, and, you know. Yes, sir?
Talking about cameras, given that, must have mistaken, there's only three ways into this area, in this way, three ways and three ways to dial, that's three cameras, I mean, I understand what strengths, but I had something possibly, we had an idea, every single time, people have to get in unless they're actually looking. Usually that's probably a possibility.
So, I mean, and the question being is, the points of, the three major points of ingress and egress into the Plumas Lake area, the installation of cameras that are essentially recording all of your activities, and basically, you know, then the time that we have a potential suspect that we're making. Difficult thing to answer from a standpoint of, one, the privacy issues with the general public, certainly the latest issues with the NSA tapping our phones and whatever it is, they're going, I, it's a, it's a very, very volatile topic to discuss. I get your point, probably none of them we're probably going to work at any time soon, but as you say, never I guess. We are strategically crime-driven, based on problems that are occurring, deploying them for a limited period of time. They runs into a whole huge overarching privacy issue with people in the world these days that could be, could be wrong.
I don't understand that, one of the cities out, there was everywhere, so I don't understand what you're saying.
No, I, I can, unless it's California, you'd have one or five of that. No, I'm sure there's large portions of major metropolitan cities that are doing similar ones. Good, excellent point. Yes, sir, Rebecca?
If you're, if you want to say it's another way.
Yeah, the question is graffiti, do we have a system in place in which to address the graffiti? The answer is yes. And also another thing too is, folks, please, please call into our dispatch center, or you can certainly send an email about graffiti and graffiti. All of our deputies and any employee in their travels, is certainly as they see graffiti go up, is that we, before we log it within our dispatch, and once a week, before we email that list to a voluntary organization called Graffiti Box, and they come out and mail, and they, they try to operate any of these, or two, three times a week, or a day, go into a certain area, and get a warrant for that tag. But please let us know, especially if there's any indications with it, certainly get our gang deputies involved, and be aware of that, photographing it off, obviously for their records and their investigation. Sometimes, folks, the honest answer with the graffiti, it becomes a war of the books. And ours is, we will continue to paint over it, there'll be many occasions where it's been, you know, spray painted over within 72 hours, or we've painted over the top of it, and you just go back and forth. I will tell you that, the more that we keep painting over it, we've actually found that eventually they tend to migrate, unfortunately, somewhere else, and this may be out of your area, because they get tired of it. But yes, sir, there is a program, just according to us, many times the community does report graffiti, it's already on our log, but the next way for the volunteers to go out and paint over it. Yes, sir?
Is there a curfew, out there, is there, for a minor? And also, is there a rule of sports? When is that?
Uh, curfew, uh, yes, and they have a typical time, honestly, sir, we're sorry to give you the exact time, and that is, I, I will have to check if I can get your information, we get it out through the website. There is a county ordinance that relates to underage individuals running around that go off of purpose, and we do occasionally, in other counties, push children away, and we take them home, or have parents come and give them, and cut them aside for a curfew by an angle. Again, aimlessly wandering around, if you're walking from one friend's house to the next, and we've got to verify that, you know, we don't actually get on board, cut us out. As far as the noise ordinance goes, you know, a lot of it kind of, kind of somewhat of a reasonable standard, it's been a very problematic ordinance in the county, in the sense of the way that ordinance is written, we are working towards trying to make it a little simpler, keep it simple, kind of circular approach to it on all our parts of the government. It says they have several meters, and this, and that, and everything, and this part, and this ends, and the honest answer is, it gets very cumbersome. And obviously, 415, the yellow code relates to disturbances, we get a large number of those, place policies with those, if it's loud music, loud parties, things going on, obviously it becomes a reasonable standard to do this. If we come back to the same site too often, it does ultimately prompt this essentially shut the ordinance down, and generally, most part, the voluntary compliance out of those folks. Generally, under the noise ordinance, it also takes more than one person complaining in order to essentially reach the level that likely possible. Especially if it's a chronic offender, the, the, this. Question is, with the graffiti, are we noticing that some of the graffiti is being being related? The answer to the question is yes. Is it unique to this town? Absolutely not. I mean, literally, it is different. Certainly, I would tell you, folks, 25 years ago, when I was a deputy in this county, there were a few people kind of called gang members, maybe you, them, maybe it was, maybe your grandmother's, and it was kind of not that huge of a deal, certainly those days are long ago. In the last ten or fifteen years, there's been a steady increase and a change in the gang presence in the UCA Center area. You know, with that creation, uh, about four or five years ago, I can't remember exactly, maybe about five years ago, uh, an in-house, if you are gang member, first ever, they were full-time, nothing but gang cases. Working with the schools, coming to community meetings and addressing that. If you want a particular gang meeting, uh, you can set something up like this and have the gang officers come and talk to you about that. We also partner with the UCA Center Law Enforcement Agencies, what's now called, uh, the addition to Net Five, our mechanical force team. Is also a UCA Center gang unit. Every month, we actually call Life Safety Operations, UCA Center Area Gang Enforcement Team, where it's pooling all the resources of the UCA Center Law Enforcement Agencies, probation offices, many times state parole. Occasionally the FBI, I have, I have trouble with that as well. If the FBI has been involved in this as well. And we move it around. One, one week maybe in, uh, UCA M, the next time we deploy, we may be in the city of Marysville, the next time in UCA City, or the next time in Southern County. And again, tracking, validating, uh, those gang members. Uh, we have wrapped up a lot of years, well, over about thirty, twenty-seven years of gang enhancement, of gang members in our community over the last four or five years. Uh, and they are here. They are here. Uh, the answer to that question is, is that if you have any concerns about gang activity in your area, uh, maybe potentially your child getting to wear certain clothes and things that, that have this, this problem, or happens since somebody else protected you on that. Um, my philosophy has been, and I think it's proven successful, that with the gang element, the more attention you give them, the more you pay them business, whether they want it or not, it tends to keep a bit of the lid on the problems that they, they, uh, they have created. Uh, we are regularly doing probation for all surges and compliance checks on our gang members. And any, even technical violation of any gang member, we will in fact, affect arrest and take, and take them from there. But they are here. They are here.
Uh, for some time, we've noticed a lot of people speeding, you know, pretty bad. I've been talking about it for a while. I don't know if there's anything we can do as a community. I live in a court, so it's not that bad, but I feel for some of the families that do live. Like on Layton Grove, these guys are doing forty-plus miles an hour. And I don't know what we can do besides talking about it, whether it's stop signs or speed bumps or... I mean, I'm fearful for these kids out here sometimes riding their bike. You know, it's, it's crazy.
Yeah, on, on this issue of traffic, and I would tell you, the Plumas Lake area and, uh, and the headquarter developed in, uh, down in Linda as well. Um, you'd be amazed the number of emails that I get directly to me, pro residents like yourself, saying, hey, this intersection or this stretch of road, there, there really people are picking up a lot of speed. Uh, they're really, everybody can do it, what we call a telephonic stop, if you pay attention to it. Every time I get that information, I even push it off to our control folks to pay attention to it. And I share it with Officer Beck at her office, and between the two of us, uh, we address those issues. I would say there have been intersections in years past in Plumas Lake that our deputy has actually, he will consciously sit in those intersections or up the street and just start calling people. There's a, there's a bit, I might, it's kind of humorous to me in that there's been this, this storm around here for quite some time. Hey, don't worry about it, it's a sheriff's deputy behind me, they can't write you a ticket. That's total nonsense, by the way. It may or may not, depending on how ridiculous your violation is, but we do traffic enforcement, especially what's directed by compliance from you in a particular area. I can guarantee you that in the last four years, we've had more traffic incidents in the UCA Sheriff's Department than we have all the other years combined since eighteen fifty, when we became a camp. We really do. And, and there is no, we recognize that when there are people here from the, they're not enough of them. They cover two counties, and we get that. So, they communicate with us, but it's like, hey, we're going to admit our position because we may have a problem. And we, we're constantly sharing that information. So, my answer to you is let us know, let them know, they'll share it with us, we'll share it with them, and together we'll go out there and quell the problem.
So, does the highway patrol physically patrol inside the community, or they mainly on the highway?
We control everywhere in California. Our jurisdiction breaks down to one thing, which is what we take from every regular traffic. Like Sheriff Gerber was saying, they have to both leave the county and Southern County. We don't have very many officers and officers who feel the pressure of the fiscal lobby as well. And we work very closely with Sheriff and the other guys, and we work very closely with Southern County guys. For what you're talking about is the speed issue. We have, we traffic databases, and if you call us, let us know what the problems are, we can address them. About that, we don't know. So, what I'm asking you is, and I can give you guys all the phone number right here, right now. If you have an issue, please call me, you know, the database. We specifically address every issue that comes in, you know, as we, we offer the officer down there to answer the problem. Um, and most of the issues that we had in the past, in Plumas Lake, have been in school districts, like the school jobs. So, if we have something speeding, unfortunately, if you put, if you lower the speed limit, or you put more speed limits, or if we stop signs out, we definitely, we'll, we'll problem. And we don't have the authority to change the speed limits, all we can do is reinforce what's there. So, if you tell us the location, then I can give you information before I leave, uh, I'll put it in the system, we can get officers down there.
That'll be great. Thank you.
Yes, number six, seven, four, five, one, four, one. Five, one, five, one, four, one. And you can ask, or you can just say you have a traffic complaint, and you can talk to your neighbor, ask him some, and he'll get you the, the, the. And you can ask for me, I'm Officer Joey, yeah, there's two coaches in the office, I'm Joey. So, if you have a question with us, please feel free to call. We are open and we are here for you, yeah. Let me address another thing, real quick. Every ticket or citation that we write does not go to our, our, uh, it goes to the county over in. And we don't get toasters, and we don't get, and we don't get. So, just keep that in mind, we have no money for the tickets that we write. Yes, can you tell us, are there specific officers, uh, assigned to the schools here, or is it one officer per offering? No, we don't have full resource officers, unfortunately. I wish we did. We don't have enough officers to, to do that. We have specific officers in every day, we have different officers, so we take different routes. So, but we have a specific officer per day at this area, and every end officer that engages. Do you expect them to be here for the first day at school? I hope so, but keep in mind, we have the entire county too.
Ma'am, along that note, I will tell you that, that especially for the first few days of the new school year starting, we try to make a very conservative effort at all of our schools, is to kind of have a presence of, whether it's through our volunteer programs as well. Just because it's the new effectiveness and people finding that new pace and tempo of the school year. Um, so we, we try to address that proactively as well. Talk as often as we can the first day and, and throughout that first new semester. Yes, sir?
One problem, park and hold car, head on the street, on the side of the street, and they go and drive faster, and they're, 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 they're. Do you have any other options, because we've got very, after the, 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 the radar, I mean, the, 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 the.
The law is with the radar. We have to have surveillance. And in order to do that, we have to have a power transfer, and we have to have a, 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 a. Uh, we could use, we could use radar and, uh, I will tell you something like that. But we don't have any specific data with the control card or the device. We do have, yeah, we do have a speed radar that we put out twice in each county every month. So, if you have an area that you think like the speed that you were talking about, let me know when I can put the speed radar out. And this, this will bring you information, and it'll also, you know, bring, bring attention to the speed. I know, because a lot of times people aren't paying attention to the speed you're traveling.
Yes, sir?
A lot of things, uh, there's still around, there's a lot of people who are, who are, who are, who are, who are. Is any name, is there still a name, is there a name, or who should we call for a, 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 or is it, is it?
If it's something like that, that'll lie in one, because definitely it puts, putting an officer out. So, that, that'll lie in one. So, which way do you get the officer out?
If, if, if they, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if the, kind of spending, donuts and all that is, it's on a big, heavy street, then I mean, either one of us could potentially be involved in that part. Considering they're watching, or something with, you know, a quad or something like that, they're definitely not going to be involved in something like that, and it's off the street, so.
You have to be able to, that, 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 that.
Yeah, but this, on that topic, I've, uh, for some reason, I think there's a lot of, uh, the wild ride, and, and, and stuff, I think, maybe it's, I'm actually there, it's, 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 uh, uh, but I prefer to throw the, the, the stopway out there, by the, by the, by the, and call, and, and report it, and so. Obviously, most of our response time is not going to allow you to catch this person in the back house, is it? What would we need to spot, too, now? What would we need to follow up on?
Um, what we would like you to do, if they not involved, um, you can get a license plate that we'll follow up on. If you can get a description of the driver, if you can get a description of the driver, people follow up on. It might be an hour to, to buy the car, and it's got to be a, a, a.
You know, this is what I've done before. I, I was having a car in Alway, and I assumed that I was on a motorcycle, and it was, you know, fifteen hours, and I think the best thing is out of the process. And, and it's not just, you know, things like that. And it's not just, you know, things like that. Yeah, if you're the world where they did last year, I've been out here, and I'm back south of the state, there's a big, there's a big, you know, she was speaking about over there, people tend to go there, mess around, and they, it's the same sort of thing, you know, out there, and you need the greatest speed, you have to call, or something, you gotta typically send somebody else to do that, or, 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 or.
It will be availability, but if we have to, they will definitely be up there. And like, you know, like our dispatch, we're, we're, we'll have to send a, 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 a staff, we can do the same thing. So just, just give us the information as quick as possible. You know, if there's something like a loan, or if you're living, or if you're trying to purchase a license, and that's, that's going to be us. Description of the car, description of the driver.
And on many occasions, when you find that, that if your car might fall, and then, by the way, if you didn't know that, the UBS Center CHP Office is the only CHP Office in the entire state of California that serves two counties. Every other, every other, every other county in the state of California has its own CHP Office, you know, they have, they still, uh, uh, definitely do. So frequently, and I mean, their manpower, they, they may have a traffic fatality somewhere, major, major issue going on, they will retain you when that comes in, call us and say, hey, we are way out of position, in much extent, the ETA to get there, can you guys go check this out? And that, that, that happens all the time, and, and we will do. That's all I can, yes, sir.
Uh, I think those police like park ride, or park those there, I mean, the park rides usually get hit with, with windows, so, or whatever, is that a dual, uh, control area?
That is primarily our responsibility, although we do share that information with neighboring agencies as well. And the question that you did hear was for parking rights, they target for vehicle break-ins, uh, sometimes you can look at the burglary, uh, to the mental, uh, mental theft aspect of, which certainly has been a number of challenges in the last seven years. And certainly, that's a good area, very quickly, we start recognizing, if we have a pattern of a trend, again, those are areas where we employ and provide strategies to try and address problems. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, the last one we had, that actually was the one in, uh, in Alford, on Carolina, that was a nexus to this one down here. We actually didn't catch the attempted offense, thankfully, but you're right, that, that is something that we never attended to, and again, you are the victim, or know someone is, it's very important, again, to call us and let us know that, so it doesn't end up with, with, with 674, which is what we probably should know. But you're all right, because it's, it does tend to attract a problem, and we're aware to that. Yes, sir.
Now, as far as graffiti, the corner you said, because you can, is that something that as a community, we could come to some kind of terms of getting that video monitor? Because those are cars just sitting there, and that's, you know, kind of part of the right.
That's an interesting question, I don't know if I have the answer to what things we, the county would do as a community, if you have a will or a desire to fund and to install cameras at the point of interest, the interest of your area. I'm not sure, but if I need that information from you, I would need some contact information online, let me, let me not give you bad information, you can follow up, okay? Yes, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Um, my question is, uh, at 81, uh, 81, I, I, as far as, 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 as far as,